Yes, and this morning, instead of an invocation, I want to read a point. I think it's especially poignant at this time in our lives and in the commission's lives. It's called "A Builder or a Wrecker." As I watched them tear a building down, a gang of men in a busy town, with a ho-heave-ho and a lusty yell, they swung a beam and a side wall fell. I asked the foreman, "Are these men skilled? Are the men you hired, if you would build?" He gave a laugh and said, "No, indeed. Just common labor is all I need. I can easily wreck in a day or two what builders have taken years to do." And I thought to myself, as I went on my way, "Which of these roles have I tried to play? Am I a builder who works with care, measuring life by rule and square? Am I shaping my work to a well-made plan, patiently doing the best that I can? Or am I wrecker, who walks the town content with the labor of tearing people down? Please let my life and my labors be that which will build for eternity."
Thank you, Commissioner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we bring the meeting to order, we've got a special recognition to do so. Commissioner Commander, will you join me down front?
Yes, sir.
Bonnie Alford, will you come up, please?
This is tough for a Seminole to step into a gator like this.
But I love it this weekend.
Yeah, we lick our wounds, aren't we? Anyhow, Bonnie has been with the county for over eighteen years and has done a fabulous job in a variety of positions. She has chosen the month of November to effect her retirement, and we wanted to let her know that we're truly going to miss her and all the things that she's done for the county. So we have a little plaque that tells you congratulations and best wishes. We're going to miss you, and Godspeed with everything that you do, sweetie.
Thank you.
You want any comments?
It's been my pleasure and honor to know this woman for... We were in diapers at the time, but we have been friends for more years than I can count, and she's one of the two most lovely, good people I've ever known. We're going to miss her.
I'd just like to say one thing. I have worked for a wonderful town. Walton County is a great town. The people here are wonderful. The team I work with, Wilmer Stafford, is one of the best. Even the commissioner that's a Seminole. But I do love the people. I love assisting people. I love helping people. I've learned a lot, and I just wish the best with this town.
Thank you, Commissioner. Come on up. This is not "The Price is Right," but come on down.
You know, so often, unfortunately, there are people that are always more than willing and happy to tear this county down. And I agree with Bonnie. I think it's one of the most wonderful places to live. We have some of the best people in the world that live in this county. They're caring. They care for each other. I've said for many years, "We may talk about you, but when you need us, we're right there to help you." And that's what I want to say about David, and I truly have known him since he was a little boy. His dad used to work next to the funeral home that I ran. David is a giver. I do the Fourth of July Festival, as many of you know, as well as hometown Christmas. And when I need something on the Fourth of July, this man comes out in the heat to fix lights at the pavilion. I need him to fix lights at the fairground, he's there. And since the fairground has been renovated, this man has spent thousands of his personal time hours. Now, he's done some for the county, but he's spent thousands of his personal time, and I would venture to say thousands of his own dollars out of his own pocket, to make sure that we had a fair this year. He worked weekends. He worked Sundays. He worked holidays. I know it for a fact. He's been out there. He has devoted himself to making sure that fair building was ready for all of us to have a fair, but much more than that. Anytime he is needed in this county, he's there to help anybody. And I just wanted to recognize one of our good employees, as they all are, and say thank you for the job you do, and thank you for making Walton County a better place to live.
I've known David for fifteen years. Not only is he a hard worker, he's a good friend, and thank you for all that he's done for the county, David.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. County. Down to work.
Okay, I call this meeting to order. Welcome to our Board of County Commissioners meeting for today, which is October 27th. Thank you all for being here. First thing, Mr. Jones, is additions and deletions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two additions we'd ask your consideration. The first, under the consent agenda, for the board to appoint me as the second alternate to the Gulf Consortium. There's some meetings coming up that has brought my attention that Commissioner Commander, as the primary member, Commissioner Meadows, as the first alternate, may not be able to attend. This will allow us, me, to attend as a voting member if the board so chooses. The second request is under the TDC, is that you consider rescheduling the No-December 10th workshop to discuss TDC organization. We've gotten a proposal from a DMO consultant that would like to come and be a part of that. It's going to take two to three hours, so if you would, you may consider that, rescheduling at a time when they can come and be a part of it. Otherwise, that's all the changes we have.
Okay. Which is the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, we need approval of the agenda.
So move with the additions.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, we have... Do we have a thing for...
Ayes.
Okay. We have approval of the Waste Management Expenditure, TALs, and Commissioner Chapman, we understand, as in the past, you're recusing yourself?
Yes, I have a conflict of interest, and I have filed the proper form with the clerk.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, we have... Do we have a thing for...
Ayes.
Okay. We have approval of the Waste Management Expenditure, TALs, and Commissioner Chapman, we understand, as in the past, you're recusing yourself?
Yes, I have a conflict of interest, and I have filed the proper form with the clerk.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll take things just a little bit out of order and move. Item C to the first for your consideration. This is a request proclaiming October 23 through 31 as... I'm trying not to say "Wed Ribbon Week," as I did in our pre-meeting, but Red Ribbon Week, and recognize the Emerald Coast Young Marines. We did this last year, and we had a member of the Young Marines in attendance, and we have one here today that I believe has a few words for you. But we certainly recommend you approve the proclamation and resolution.
Come on up. Tell us your name, and tell us what you'd like to say.
I'm Austin Ginnelsberger. I'm going to be telling you about the Red Ribbon Week. Okay. The Red Ribbon Week. The Red Ribbon is free. Please wear this red ribbon every day from now through the month of October to show you're visible, committed, and are war against illegal drugs and those committing that promote their use. Whenever you are asked about your red ribbon, please tell the story about Kiki Commandant. Kiki was a Marine and a drug enforcement administrator agent that was abducted, tortured, and murdered by drug lords, and was abducted, tortured in 1985. Kiki had a vision of drug-free American, and by wearing the red ribbon, you can show your support for this vision. Please support the Young Marines in getting this anti-drug message out in our communities. The last week in October is known as the Red Ribbon Week and celebrates Kiki's life and vision. Please join with the Young Marines and encourage everyone you know to join this celebration of Kiki Commandant's life and where the red ribbon anti-drug education is vital and key eliminate, and the Young Marines fight against illegal drugs used in our communities. Red Ribbon Week provides you an excellent important to help educate our youth. If you can't help us fight in this, then who will? Please wear your red ribbon, do a part, show your support, and let's work and work to rid our communities of illegal drugs and those who deal with them.
Thank you. Very well put. Commissioners, we have a resolution prepared to support the Red Ribbon Week in recognition of Kiki Camarena, who served very, very well before he was kidnapped and murdered, so...
Motion to approve.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And again, our thank you very much for... Words well done. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about something that was under the consent agenda?
Sure.
Can we get somebody to... I got a letter from a group about the landscape median on 98, that there were some issues there. Can we get somebody on staff to work with the landscaping company out there that... Take a look and see what the problems are?
Yes, ma'am. Be glad to.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before, here's a request from the Walton County Sheriff's Office, asking that we send a letter of approval to Florida Blue to provide an experience rating for the sheriff's office separate from that of the overall county employees. We're certainly not opposed to that. However, staff would recommend that we seek some counseling advice from our healthcare consultant to be sure that that is an appropriate request before we move it forward.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further board discussion?
That is for us to consult with...
Consult with the consultant.
Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, Commissioners, is before you, is a request from the City of Dufuniaq for you to approve in a local agreement regarding the road and bridge ad valorem and a portion that they have been receiving, and this resolution would continue that. Of course, even been a good bit of discussion over this over the last couple of weeks, perhaps. I believe Mr. Davis has a report that he's presented to you that he may want to speak to.
Commissioners, I emailed you yesterday a fairly lengthy report on the history of this particular payment. Essentially, Commissioners, what has happened is, for a number of years, and I'm estimating since the early 1980s, this money has been paid directly to the city from the tax collector's office. It apparently started many, many years ago, in 1914, and in the early, late 70s, early 80s, there was some controversy or lack of payment, and it was being paid then under a Florida statute that has now been repealed. It looks like there was some discussion and some motions and seconds back in the early... and votes back in the early 80s, and it was paid and has continued to be paid in that manner by the tax collector directly to the city since that date. There's no prohibition against you approving an interlocal agreement to provide funding to the city for maintenance of roads and bridges within the city. But you need, if you're going to do that, if it's going to be done, you have to approve it. It can't be done by an automatic deduction or automatic formula calculation by the tax collector's office and then sent directly to the city. It's like any other expenditure of ad valorem funds. It needs to be approved by you budgeted and sent, or made part of the budget, and sent out of your ad valorem collections that come from the tax collector's office. So the purpose of the interlocal agreement was to formalize what had hap... if you want to pay the money in the future or this year going forward, you would have to approve an interlocal agreement to do so.
Thank you.
Commissioners, just if I may finish up the... Well, we don't take a position. Staff doesn't whether you should approve this or not. We do think there's some work that may need to be done as far as understanding exactly what the county's resources are doing in the city on our county-maintained roads. We've identified a number of those roads, so if it was your decision, we could certainly work with the city to determine exactly what these funds are being used for, what we're doing, what they're doing, to give you a little bit of reporting on that.
Mark, am I correct that this act was repealed in 1984?
The statute that they were operating under, apparently in the late 70s, early 80s, was repealed in 1984.
But it's been paid since then?
As far as I can tell, yes.
Do we know how much has been?
I do not, off the top of my head.
Been paid?
Mr. Chairman.
But they also get an ad valorem tax for the city?
They're...
That's separate from the county's wides?
The city has its own ad valorem taxation. There's also a road and road gas tax that is distributed to the three municipalities and the county. Now, interestingly, Paxton forwards theirs to Walton County, because we maintain all the roads from the city of Paxton using the road and gas tax... Excuse me, gas road tax.
Commissioner.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I think there's some things that I would like to point out. Let's go back a little in history. You know, Dufuniaq Springs was the county seat for over 100 years or more. Everybody... 200 years? Everybody came to walk to Dufuniaq Springs if they wanted to do business in Walton County. So I'm sure back in 1914, that was done to help maintain the roads that people traveled on. Certainly, and I'm sorry, I think part of this is a witch hunt, but this has been done through... And I'm not blaming any tax collector, because it's been done since Sue Carter, since Ken Little... I mean, Ken Little's dad, on up to Rhonda. It has been done, went straight from their office to the city. The BCC had no knowledge of it. But I want to remind everybody that the people in Dufuniaq Springs pay ad valorem taxes as well. They pay them to the county. They don't get benefit of the Sheriff's Department, because they have their own... They pay for their own city police. They don't get benefit of the fire department, because they pay for their own fire department. So the county apparently has been sending money to the city to help maintain some of the roads. I have a list here of roads that are county roads that intersect in this city. And remember, four county districts, except District Five, all come to this city. So these city residents pay taxes to Walton County as well. And what are they getting for their money? I'm sure they question that sometimes. I agree that we need to look at this going forward, but I believe the city has already, because they have for how many years, budgeted, and they have a very limited budget. You've got to remember, this is a small town with very limited resources, and they depend on this money to help maintain the roads that you and I drive on every day when we come to Dufuniaq Springs. So I would like to recommend that we go ahead and pay what was allocated for this year, and then let's take the time to take and work with the city and take a look at it going forward. But I certainly... We will cripple the city if we don't, and through no fault of their own, through no fault of ours, this has come to light, and I think the citizens that vote and pay taxes in this city deserve, at least for us, to fund this for this year.
Commissioner, I've got a question. You've got a list of roads.
Yes, sir.
Are those roads that the county maintains inside the city?
These are county-city/roads. I got this from Wilmer. Wilmer can probably explain it better, yes. But the trouble is, when we don't know when... Let's say they pave a road. They don't... Okay, this part's the city we're going to calculate. They pave the whole road. But the city keeps them clean, keeps the gutters... If there's a pothole, the city repairs the pothole. They don't have the big, heavy equipment like we do to build roads, but they can... They help maintain county roads within the city.
Okay. Well, I'm confused, because are they county maintained, or are they city maintained roads? How many are on there? About...
A whole bunch.
Fifteen, twenty roads?
Yes, sir. We get actually thirty, Mr. Chairman. We... In some of them, only get parts. You take Bob Sacks, probably two tenths of Bob Sacks headed out west. That part's in the city, but we maintain it.
You maintain the whole length?
Yes, sir.
So in addition to the gas tax that they get, we're also providing maintenance to some roads in the city, too?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
There's no doubt that we want to try and help the city as much as we possibly can. I'm still a little behind the curve, I guess, to really, have we identified all the roads that this would be applicable to? And I guess I'd also like to know is, how much money has the city itself spent of that allocation on any particular road that are county roads within the city? Without that, I think we need to maybe step back a second and just have staff further researches and come back with some more definitive answers, so we can make a decision that time. The fact that it hasn't been... I can't find anything. I don't think staff has found anything dealing with the authorization to give it since the 1900s, or actually '84, somewhere in there.
There was actually a vote, I believe, in '81, and some discussion at commission meetings.
And there was one discussion at a commission meeting. They weren't going to pay it. They're going to let the courts decide. I don't...
And we could find no lawsuit that was ever filed. And you know how records are, but we have looked pretty hard, our staff, and we have found no lawsuit.
Okay.
But there was an auditor general letter back to the city and the county saying, "Here's the formula based on this statute," and just after that, the county voted to pay the funds.
Okay. Have you talked to the county's auditors about this?
Yes, sir, I have. Yes, sir.
How did they say that they didn't come up with that?
I... They... The reaction was, it was a minuscule amount of money, and they didn't note it in any of their reports.
A minuscule amount?
Yeah. I agree. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Meadows.
I agree, too. We want to help cities, but we also are, you know, we're in charge of the citizens' taxpayer money, so I think we need to know exactly what's going on and then take... Excuse me, take a look at it at that time.
I agree, Commissioner. We've still not got all the roads, I don't feel like. It's just a short time. We've not really had... We've worked hard on it yesterday, but let's do some more research, and we'd be glad to bring you back. Anything you request of us.
I just have one question. Are there any roads that you know of that the city maintains totally and that y'all just... Y'all have any kind of agreement or understanding, or it doesn't even have to be in writing, kind of a verbal, like, "Y'all do this one, and we do this one," or do we just kind of get in there together, or... And that might be something you could bring back to us. I mean, I'd like to know if there's any roads that they do solely, is what I'm asking.
Commissioners, I think one thing you will find, and I think Wilmer and staff did some research yesterday, that a number of the roads, especially on the list that Commissioner Commander has, were accepted by the county in the late 90s.
Yes, sir.
And a couple over the last 15 years has been added for different reasons, but I think the vast majority of them was approved by the Board of County Commissioners to be county-maintained roads back in the late 90s, if I recall.
Yes, sir. We approved one road, which was Bay Street, in August of this year, in which we have an affidavit where we maintain that road for the past 14 years, and it was just not on our county-maintained road list. So that's actually the only one we've added.
So Commissioners, I'm hearing, do you wish to table this?
Yes, I think I'd feel more comfortable about it if we can allow staff time to research and confirm the number of roads and the expenditures for those roads spent by the city. Without that, I'd be reluctant to take any action.
Is that your motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion to table. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is tabled.
May.
Order one. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, next item is a request from Erin, and I'm not even going to try to pronounce her last name, to close Scenic Highway 38 on December the 5th of this year for the Christmas on the Beach Parade. It's produced by Gulf Place. We recommend your approval contingent upon them meeting the recommendations of the South Walton Fire District and the Walton County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning. Please state your name, so we can understand how to pronounce it.
Yes, it's Erin Chikawi. And I know that it says it's for Gulf Place, but we're actually partnering with Grace... with Hope Lutheran Church, and it is to benefit the Children's Volunteer Health Network.
Where's it going? Where's it going, sir?
The parade route will go from Butler Elementary. It'll start there and then actually go to Gulf Place, which is on the corner of 38 and 393. It's a little under... It's right at two miles. We... At first, when we went to the initial permitting meeting, we were not requesting to close the road. That was the recommendation of the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department. We had hoped that we would be able to do slow-moving, as we've done in the past with the 38 Irish Parade that goes from the other direction, from Grayton to Gulf Place, heading westbound. This will head eastbound from the school to Gulf Place. I definitely could see it for safety reasons. I think that the parade will actually start at 3:00, and we expect that the first parade or the first float would actually reach Gulf Place within 30 minutes, so it really should not take any more than one hour. Of course, as the parade moves eastbound on 38, we could start opening some of the crossroads, but at the most, if it had to remain closed for the entire time, an hour, an hour and a half on a Saturday between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock, 3:00 or 4:30, 3:00 to 4:30 at the latest.
Okay. I noticed that the sheriff has a recommendation for seven deputies and one incident commander to be obtained for four-hour minimum timeframe. Has that been agreed, too?
I know that Hope Lutheran is actually working with the Sheriff's Posse for some volunteers for the project also, since it's a community event, and since it also sponsors... Since it benefits such a great charity in our area. So we are looking, obviously, we don't have any funds necessarily for this event. It is free. It's free for the public. It's free to have the floats participate. The idea was to have something on the east side, or excuse me, on the west side of the beach for the local children, for some of the more underprivileged children down there on the beach side. All the events and everything will be free as far as children's activities, for them to be able to make. Arts and crafts, once it reaches Gulf Place, there'll be arts and crafts. Santa Claus will be there. And then we're also asking for donations for Children's Volunteer Health Network. Um, and then we're also asking for, um, donations for Children's Volunteer Health Network, for toothbrushes, floss, and toothpaste, which they're in dire need of.
I understand. I'm concerned, though, that the sheriff has indicated he needs those people to do traffic control and crowd control during that period.
For the street, if the street is closed. That's correct. However, what we're hoping is, is that we'll be able to use volunteers, the Posse, instead of actually having to pay for the officers. But yes, we are taking the recommendation of, uh, seven persons.
Plus an incident commander.
Plus the incident commander. Seven persons, um, and we don't, I know he said four hours, but as I said, it's, actually should be less than two.
Well, I'd be concerned that we at least provide the sheriff the support that he needs for what he says he needs in order to do it.
Sure.
Yeah, that, yeah, we, you've gotta have, um, yeah, you, you've gotta have that support, um, especially if you're gonna close the lanes from, because part of Thirty-A is already closed for the bridge. So, um, um, yeah, don't we, don't we require them to officially have the sheriff and the fire to sign off on it before we?
And we've got the sheriff's form here, but the sheriff has added the requirement for that in his, for his recommendation. That's why I'm, I'm concerned that, to take his recommendation and say, well, what if, what if we can get volunteers, and let's minimize that? I mean, he is the law enforcement officer for the county, and I think he speaks best for what he's going to need to ensure that it's a, a safe and, and successful event.
Absolutely. So, I guess what I should be saying is, is yes, we agree with his recommendation of how many deputies he would like to, us to have, and for the amount of time. I guess we are still discussing the cost. We would prefer to have some of those deputies participate on a volunteer basis instead of as a paid basis. As I mentioned, we're a charity event, and the additional, I think, uh, five hundred and fifty dollars, um, in addition to, um, the incident commander, we're up into the six hundred dollar range, again, for a charity event. Um, so what we're hoping is, is that some of those officers would volunteer their time. So, I guess what I'm saying is, is I'm, we're agreeing with the sheriff, or we're very willing to, um, adhere to his recommendations. Um, we'll definitely have all of the deputies that he would like us to have. What we have not worked out is the cost.
Okay. And I don't see any of, from the Fire Department. Theirs is just a, a straight checklist. I don't see any recommendations from theirs.
They didn't have any recommendations. The only thing that they were a little concerned about, but I think that we've worked through, and that was part of closing the road, was that we are gonna use one of the fire trucks as the grand marshal at the end of the parade, with Santa Claus on the fire truck. They were a little concerned that, since they were in the back of the parade, if, if an incident happened, Santa Claus would have to hop off, and they would have to go, um, if there was oncoming traffic heading, um, westbound. But since they're now recommending to close it, if that did happen, and they did need that vehicle, Santa Claus would be able to hop off, and they'd be able to go either direction.
Are you, are you all gonna close Three-Ninety, uh, Three-Ninety-three at all? Because I saw the parade route.
No.
You're, you're gonna, you're gonna turn up, it looks like you're gonna turn up Three-Ninety-three, and then?
No. We're not going all the way down to Three-Ninety-three. We're actually turning up Laura Hamilton Road.
Okay.
Um, which is there at Gulf Place.
Right, okay. Okay, so you won't be turn, okay, good. That intersection will be open, then?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, do, do y'all put signs out on Ninety-eight at the west end of?
It is required. We'll need to have the signs out at least one week prior that says road closed for event during the hours.
Okay.
Of the parade.
So, Board, would you like to approve this contingent upon the, getting them together with the sheriff and resolving that particular issue?
Yeah, I think we'd like to know that that's been resolved, that.
Okay. So, that would be a, a motion contingent upon getting that resolution?
Yeah, yeah.
I need a motion and a second.
I motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further board comment? Any public comment? Yes, ma'am. Please come up, state your name for the record, spell your last name.
Lisa Boushy, B-O-U-S-H-Y. I just have a question. What happens during the ti, first of all, I would think there'd be some set-up time and some breakdown time, maybe not breakdown, but set-up time, so maybe the hour, hour and a half becomes more like two hours, or a little longer than that. But also, how do they work it when they literally close the road, so that people that live or have to do business in that area can get back and forth? They just can't? Or, does anybody know?
Historically, in the past, with, when I was with the Sheriff's Offices, there was somebody that needed to get there. They lived there, they needed to get back home, maybe they worked all night, or they're a business owner and needs to get in there. Uh, the deputies normally will allow them to go on to there, just get in there and get off the road as soon as possible. They may hold them briefly, if the route is right there on top of them, you know, the participants, and they may have to hold up a little bit, let some of it clear before they allow it. But normally, if you talk with a deputy on scene at a particular checkpoint, they will, they'll work with you.
Okay. Well, and I'm not, I have no association with them, but for instance, Stinky's Restaurant, which is a very popular restaurant in this area, as you know, that's in that route. And I'm just curious how they're gonna handle, I, I know it's not prime dinner time or anything, but that place is swamped every time I go by it, just about.
Is there a back route in there to Stinky's going up?
I guess, well, but, the, there is, but you, it's beyond Butler. It's, you know, to the east of Butler, so I, I can't, that's why I was curious about this, because I can't really think of a detour that allows for people that have to get along in that area to be able to get around or get to things. But anyway, it's just a thought, I'm not, I, unfortunately, I have no solution for you. I wish I did, but it's just something to think about.
Well, if she sits down and, and converses with the sheriff and his, or his people, I'm sure they can work something out concerning, um, what happens if somebody's trying to get to Stinky's.
Also, you, um, get with Jim Richard at Stinky's, and I'm sure that, you know.
We already did.
He's probably, yeah.
Yeah, we already got with him, and that was the reason why we had the parade at the time that we did, because they're actually closed between lunch and dinner during that timeframe.
Okay.
But they're actually on the corner of, um, Hillcrest, which actually connects to Allen Loop, which then goes out to Thompson Road. So, Stinky's is, yeah, back way through Thompson Road anyways, onto Highway Ninety-eight. Um, a lot of those owners, i- i- again, it's a two-mile stretch, and in reality, if someone had to get out, emergency or otherwise, during that timeframe, it's less than, in most cases, a, uh, two-hundred-yard stint to one of the back roads where they'd be able to go back around, Allen Loop, where they'd be back, able to go back around, um, Hillcrest, or, um, one of the other side streets, where it would be a very short place on Thirty-A. And again, the parade route is only one-way eastbound. So, almost anyone could get out and head westbound at any time without it affecting the parade in any way. It's more safety than anything.
Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ma'am, if you would provide that, once you get those terms worked out with the Sheriff's Office, um, with Mary Cooper, um, and, and just let us know that that's been taken care of. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is regarding the filling of the vacant economic development position on the local restore committee. Um, we've had a number of applicants at this point, unless you have one that one of you wished to recommend, staff has vetted dogs and would recommend, uh, Brad Ball fans, um, seem to have the most experience in that, uh, particular field.
I should get through. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is regarding your, uh, prioritizing of the state and federal appropriation priorities and requests for the coming year. Uh, we've provided you with that list. Unless you have changes, we would ask you to, uh, approve it as presented.
I just, I, I just had, oh, gosh, nothing is, my, it's awful. I just had a couple of questions on, uh... On the, on the water and sewer along US Three-Thirty-One, under the request, it says, Walton County requests two million, et cetera, et cetera, infrastructure served properties along Three-Thirty-One Quarter, north of Highway Twenty in Freeport. Is this in the city, is, is this in the city of Freeport? Are we?
Portions are.
Yeah.
Portions are, okay.
I think by and large, it's moving outside of the city limits, though.
Okay, so are we, are we collaborating with Freeport on this? Okay, okay, um...
Even those portions that are, is not the city limits, it's in their franchise area up until it meets the Dufuniac franchise area. So, there will be collaboration, collaboration with the city of Dufuniac and the city of Freeport.
Okay. And then the other one was roadway improvements adjacent to Choctaw Bay and Coastal Dunes. The request said, it says Phase One is six miles of roadway improvements adjacent. Could we, could we name what, what the six mile includes?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you? Okay. Um, that would be good. And then, uh, uh, let's see, let me, let me just make sure I don't have another question about something. Broadband, yeah, broadband. Yeah, the, um, the broadband part, um, uh, I saw where we're gonna have a hearing on the one-point-five, one-point-three?
Yes, ma'am.
One-point-five, whatever, million to be transferred. Um, it was my understanding, we were gonna, we were going to separate it into seven-fifty and seven-fifty, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars per, per year. Um, if we pay for it out of our own money, are these funds gonna be, that we're asking for, are they gonna be reimburs, reimbursable? Um, because if we're lobbying for them, um, and we go ahead and transfer the money or fund it, is that going to, um, are we gonna be able to get reimbursed for it?
I, I'm, I'm gonna make a, an effort to try and see what I see from a financial standpoint, since we're splitting the payments in two, with part going into the next fiscal year, and this occurring as a legislative result, when the legislature meets in, what, January this year, and their new fiscal year being, uh, June third, or July first, that we would have only put out half of the money, seven-hundred-and-fifty, so I would, I would believe that the other seven-fifty would necessarily be a reimbursement, but would be the second payment, and then we would not have to make the second payment in two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
And I think another part of that will be the funding source. You know, these are just, generally, we're not targeting any funding source, but for source, as we move them forward, there may be those pots of funds that will allow us to recapture some funds that have been spent.
Yeah, because this has proposed sources of funding, and it looks like there's a hundred thousand coming from the TDC. Can, is that, can we do that? Can we take TDC money that's, that's for some kind of build-out of something?
It's, my understanding of the TDC portion is for the, the direct connection to the TDC of the broadband, and that's just the, the hard costs of getting it to the TDC.
Okay, okay, um...
To all the TDC buildings.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, th- those would be my questions. I didn't realize we had nine-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars of unencumbered general fund rollover. I've, I thought we had, that we only had five and a half million, and we split it up among everybody. I'm not saying we don't need broadband, but what I am saying is, um, my understanding was that there wasn't any more unencumbered general fund money in this next budget. We, we actually allocated it all out during the budget time that we, uh, that the five and a half million, or whatever, we split it all up between everybody. So, I just wasn't aware that there was almost a million dollars left in that unencumbered fund.
Of course, if we are as successful this year as we were this past year, we'll get nothing. So, we may end up being just totally the county funding that we're putting in.
Yeah, I think, I, that, yeah, that, that's not my, that's, that's not my point here. My point here is, under the proposed sources of funding, the nine-twenty-five, nine-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand out of the sources is labeled as unencumbered general fund rollover from fifteen to sixteen? My comment was that during the budget hearings this year, we, we split up five-point-five million dollars, I think, among all the people who requested it. And I think I was told, or we were told, that that was it. That was all the money that was, that was left to divide up between the things that we wanted. So, I, I just surprised that there's almost a million dollars left that's unencumbered, um, that when we talked about infrastructure and all that kind of thing, that, anyway.
If I recall correctly, also, there was a, um, al- almost a half a million dollars more returned by the clerk of the court than was budgeted, and I think that was part of, part of the money that was, uh, used in this calculation, so...
No, it wasn't. It's additional. There's four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars from the clerk of courts in this, in this calculation. So, somewhere there's nine-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars unencumbered in next year's budget that, uh, that I wasn't aware of, because I thought I asked what is left after we, um, allocate this, these funds out. I'm not, I'm not saying that we don't need to use it for broadband, but I'm just saying, um, that I was surprised at that.
Melissa, could you come up and answer these questions, please, ma'am? You were nodding your head back there, Sophie.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am. Now that we're at the end of the year, we get those last drops from the state, and also the, um, excess fees that were, are remitted back from the constitutional offices, and the clerk's office has, and, you know, we don't find out until everything's closed out for the end of the year. The clerk's office has remitted, I believe it was four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars more than we anticipated. So, those funds are rolling into the general fund balance. And also, the, the revenue collections that we've had for those last couple months of the year were larger than anticipated, so that made up the rest of that, that has made up the rest of that balance, that would just roll into the general fund balance.
Okay, so we have about one-point-three million dollars that we did not anticipate?
We do.
Okay. That, that was my question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Motion to approve the priority list?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further commission discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is, we're requesting you, uh, award RFP zero-one-five-dash-zero-two-eight for debt collection services to the top-ranked firm of automated collection services, allow us to begin negotiations. This is in regard to, uh, ambulance billing, and our ability to, um, secure payment on as many of those bills as we can, recognizing that there are some sensitivities that go along with it, and that'll be part of our negotiation, um, as to how big of a hammer we allow and we see folks to use when they go to try to collect some of these debts. But our recommendation is to, we'll, uh, award to, uh, automated collection services, and we begin a negotiation process, and we'll bring you back a contract at a later date. So, moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, Commissioners, is a, an update on the San Roy property that you have staff to, um, actually, we obtained appraisals on this property. Uh, we met with the owner week before last, I believe. Uh, he is asking four million dollars for the property, and that is more than twice of what the appraisals came in at. Um, so, unless you wish us to continue negotiating, with the understanding it would be substantially above the, uh, appraised price, we will, uh, end that process, but is that your discretion?
There, let me ask you. What, what did the appraisals come in?
One came in at one, one million, and one came in at one-point-seven-five million.
Okay. One of the things, um, I, I don't, you know, I, the, um, th- this would be public beach front, which is sorely needed, as we know. Um, that's a really high price. I'm just wondering if, if the TDC could look at that. It's, you know, we just, we desperately need some more public beach. And I'm wondering if we could.
We can certainly have more discussions with the owner.
Yeah, I would. I think I would, just because I think that a lot of it is unbuiltable for, you know, for residential. I think part of it might be, but the rest of it is merely beach.
Right. We'll be glad to reach back out to him and see how, if anything's changed.
Yeah, see if you can, see if he'll come down on it.
There's also a piece of property across Lake Billhead in that area that's, I believe it's adjacent to some property we own. At one time, they wanted a lot less than, oh, so I don't know if we want to look at that as well.
Is it, did they offer it to us?
They did, and it was very reasonable back then. I, you know, I'm not sure if there's still, you know, it might be worth looking at it since it's in the same area.
We can certainly reach out to them and see.
Yeah, I think that's the property that's, you know, the Coastal Dunleak outfall has gone over there, migrated to the west, and so, I don't know, yeah, we might just ask them.
Next is the update on the 10-acre parcel adjacent to Helen McCall Park. We have not had this property appraised at the last meeting. You asked us just to have some discussion with the owner, and their asking price is 1.75 million.
And that's, and that's, that's the 10-acre piece?
Yes, ma'am.
That would be?
Seventeen-five.
Seventeen-five an acre.
And there's, I believe, two and a half acres of it is wet.
Yeah, wetlands, so.
So you got seven and a half usable acres. If, you know, if the board wishes to carry on, move forward, the next step would be to obtain appraisals.
Obviously, we'd love to have it. I mean, I think it's worth, how much is an appraisal? How much are the appraisals? How much do they cost?
Couple grand.
Yeah, a couple thousand bucks.
Couple grand. I think it's worth getting the appraisals.
I think it's worth getting the appraisals. Let's just, yeah, let's just see.
Yeah, consensus on that?
Yeah.
Next three items, commissioners, are related to Kidd Road and the scrap program with the state. The first one is a, we're asking you to approve a resolution to authorize the county to enter into a small county road assistance program agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for resurfacing or reconstruction of County Road 183, which is Kidd and Lyon Road from US 90 to the Holmes County line. This is a resolution to enter into an agreement. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item, again, is on that same road. This is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a small county road assistance program agreement with the FDOT for County Road 183 from US 90 to the Holmes County line. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Third item on that same project is to request that we seek a request for qualifications for design and CEI services on County Road 183 from State Road 90 to the Holmes County line. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion?
I just would like to note that this is $4 million from the state of Florida to pave, to pave this road, which is great. I just want to note that, you know, when we're looking at, at road pavings and money allocation, that we're aware that, you know, we got $4 million for this one road in this location. So I think that we just need to take that into account when we're looking at other areas that are in desperate need for paving.
Yes, ma'am. Any other board to comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioners, next item is regarding the traffic control at County Road 83, pardon me, US 98. As you're aware, you approved for us to station a off-duty deputy there for 12 hours a day. That has been in place. We reached out to the sheriff's office yesterday, and they report no accidents at that site since that deputy has been positioned there. You further asked us to move forward with the process of putting up a temporary traffic signal. We have that signal design engineered, and it's been submitted to DOT for their approval, which it certainly does require. However, DOT would not consider giving approval until it was designed and engineered. So we moved that process forward. So it's in DOT hands now. They have asked some interesting questions, such as, well, would it be cheaper, or how much would it cost to put a temporary bridge alongside the bridge or replacing? And that was kind of our response, that, you know, really? But no, they're working with us to do their best to get us there. It's not there, so we don't have any recommendation on that, but we can tell you, and Chance may have some more later updates, but I can tell you what's there now is apparently working.
Yes, I think, because we haven't gotten any, we, I think I got one, excuse me, I think I got one email, but it's working. As long as that light is flashing, people from all ends slow down, so.
Go ahead, Chance.
I just wanted to give you one more. Chance Powell with Walton County Public Works. Late yesterday afternoon, discussion with DOT, we've mentioned that the Big Red Fish Lake Bridge would most likely be coming along, and that's what they're asking for about the detour bridge.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Is the Big Red Fish Lake. And we know that if we get the grant dollars to build that bridge, that there's gonna be a timeframe on that set to about one year. We're thinking that that may come at any day now. What DOT requested is that the board pass a resolution stating that the temporary signal would come down if one is allowed. So that may be something that you have to consider.
You know, if it's gonna last a year, the Red Fish, we might want to consider how much, you know, another bridge would cost, because that's gonna put those businesses out for a long time.
Well, now, I'm saying, it wouldn't be closed for a year. We'd have to build the project within a year after the grant was funded. It would probably only be another 120-day project.
Right, and if we get, depending on when we get the money, though, it could push the project into a season that we don't really want it in.
And, so what DOT would be looking at is, if we get the temporary signal up for the Draper Lake Bridge project, they may want that signal to go into a flash mode in between the two bridge construction projects, and then bring it back online for the Big Red Fish Lake project, and then ultimately take it down.
Okay, well, let's really, let's just confuse the traffic, really confuse them. You know, a light, people, you know, I think that's kind of dangerous to put one up and then take it down, but if that's all we've got right now.
In the meantime, I think we still want to continue with the sheriff having an off-duty deputy there.
Yeah, that's helping a lot.
And I think, you know, understanding that, you know, we would certainly recommend leaving the deputy in place, continue working with the DOT, and if the Big Red Fish funding comes through, maybe look at that light in a broader sense. And it may, it may, it's not gonna cost you more to put it up, whether we do it for one bridge project or two. So we might be able to have a better sense of what the DOT would allow us to do going forward.
And definitely, we'll have some, some good information back from DOT before the next board meeting.
And, Chance, if you could give us some information on temporary bridges, you know, what would it cost? What would it entail?
We can, we can get a little tighter on that. We have looked at that area there, Big Red Fish Lake, given the pedestrian bridges on the south side of the road, we would obviously have to put a temporary bridge in on the north side if that's what was required. There is some limited right-of-way there, and we know from a previous meeting with Chelco, they have an underground bore of their three-phase power is just outside of the right-of-way line there. So we may be looking at, you know, having to work around that, also getting a temporary construction easement outside of the existing right-of-way to build it, and then you got also the environmental impacts. That would have to be permitted at the Army Corps. That may not could happen within the year that the grant is allowed to get the project done.
Right, the environmental part, I think, would be the holdup, because it's gonna, it would go into the part of that lake section there, right?
Any other questions?
So we'll keep, we'll keep moving that process forward and keep you updated on it. Next item is requesting to purchase a four-inch solids handling compressor assisted jet pump for the mostly had water treatment facility in the amount of $37,904. This is a pump for emergency situations where you have a lift station go down that allows us to bypass that to keep stuff flowing. We would recommend your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, I have a second?
Yes, we want to keep it flowing.
Yeah, we want to keep it flowing. Any further board discussion?
We won't need stop-ups.
Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, we're requesting, on invitation to bid 15-031, that we reject all bids and re-advertise. There was some confusion perhaps in the language of the RFP and what was required, so just an abundance of caution. We would ask the board to reject all bids and allow us to re-advertise and rebid that collection of recycled cardboard.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion. In a second, any further board discussion?
Commissioners, one other thing, one of the comments we got from bidders was it was such a narrow RFP, they may want to, we may want to discuss the possibility of expanding what they can actually retrieve, and we'll talk to you about that later, but just want to let you know that.
So we'll need to do that before we go out for the next RFP?
Yes, we want to talk to them, make sure that that would ensure that we'd get more bids. It may or may not.
And just for clarity, this was only dealing with cardboard recycling. That expansion would include other materials?
Yes, sir.
So would it be prudent to ask the board for permission to expand that if we see that's in the best interest?
Yes.
So we would.
Let's take care of the first motion first, and we'll talk about that. Any public comment with regard to the motion to reject? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we want to deal with expanding the RFP to include what?
Other material that could be removed by bidder and recycled, yes, sir.
Okay. Is this a pick-and-choose type thing, or is it just for all recyclables?
I would suggest it would be a pick-and-choose thing, because some of them just simply aren't cost-effective to be recycled.
Allow them, alternates to bid on the other materials.
Yes, sir.
Let's, let's bring the, I'd like to see the RFP how it's written.
Absolutely.
But we're gonna ask them to bring back an RFP? Right now, it's just direction. Bring back an RFP for us to review before we say send it out.
More, more than that.
It's just direction to them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, next item for your consideration is a request to approve a right-of-way agreement to Helen McCall Park with Toy Arnett in exchange for an easement to add an additional interest to Helen McCall. Mr. Arnett is requesting that a portion of prop share be set aside on any future impacts from the proposed development of the parcel. Makes sense. We think that's a fair exchange for what we're getting with an additional interest to the park.
Question, question. Question on that. Can we, can we get this road built pretty quickly?
Let's get a road builder. Or I'll just tell you, sure we can.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Consequence.
There are some wetland impacts, I believe, on that, on that section that had to be permitted. I know, I don't think Scott Kerway's here to speak on that, but, you know, I don't know what you're considering, quick, but I would say, I would say definitely have some plans and permits ready within the next, I'd say, six to eight months, maybe. That's just a, obviously the.
Yeah, the wetland thing. Yeah, if we could get it by, you know, early spring. When does, when does, when does all the seasons start out there at Helen McCall? When does all the?
Well, it pretty much goes.
Solid.
Yeah, they have soccer, they have some, some baseball that's not in regular season, so as quick as possible for another road would be great.
This won't impact any of the fields, will it?
No, 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 this is just gonna connect on through, but, but it's, we'd like to get it done before the season starts, because you get a lot of people out there. Do we have funding for, to build that road?
Don't think so.
I don't think we have funding, but I'd like to move that we fund that road.
Where are you getting the money? Are you gonna pull the money?
Let's take it out of, I don't know.
You're gonna say mossy head.
The 925,000 that's left.
I would suggest that, have them bring back the plans, and then we'll know what it's gonna cost, and then we can take an action on that.
We can begin, we can certainly begin the process of getting to that point.
Okay, because that's gonna be a major improvement for that area, major. Thank you.
That intersection is really getting dangerous to try to get it across.
That will help with that intersection tremendously.
Thank you, Chance.
Thank you.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second on that? Yes, we do. Any public comment? Seeing none. Wait, do we have a motion? We have a motion from?
I don't remember.
Yeah, I thought, did we have a motion?
Let's, no, the clerk says we don't. We need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further board discussion? None. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. TDC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the first request under the TDC is that you reject all proposals relating to RFP 015-027 for public relations services. That was a, a, a award that was recommended that was subsequently challenged by one that was not awarded in that review. We concluded that we probably could've done a better job on some things, and again, an abundance of caution, we would recommend that those proposals all be rejected.
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Quick question, are you going to go back out with the same RFP?
No, sir. Though, if, well, that'll be up to the board, but our recommendation will, the next item will follow up on that.
Okay.
Which was the recommended, yeah, the Spring O'Brien was the current provider for those services. There is a one-year option in their agreement to renew if we so choose. We would recommend we take advantage of that option, renew for Spring O'Brien for the coming year, and then begin the process in the next few months of preparing an RFP for services, so we don't end up at a crunch state of having a contract expiring, trying to figure out if we've done a good job or appropriate way of getting to the next contract. So if you approve this moving forward, Spring O'Brien will continue in their current role for an additional year, which is provided for in their contract. In the next few months, we begin the process of an RFP to either advise them again moving forward or allow others to participate in that process.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's been brought to our attention from American Government Services for, on the mailouts to the beach project, that there are short about $5,000 in paying for those mailings due to some individual condominiums that have to be mailed to the individual owners as opposed to the associations. Total cost of that will be an additional $5,000. We would recommend if you want that process to continue, that you approve that $5,000 that's in their agreement.
And that accomplishes what? Just the mailing costs?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Yes, sir, come up, state your name for the records, spell your last name, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kent Safrit of Hoppen Green, and Sam's on behalf of about two dozen beachfront private property owners.
Spell your last name for the record.
Oh, S-A-F-R-I-E-T.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to speak to this item because recently, I think as the commissioner knows, a US District Court has ruled that the sand that the county proposed to put on this project, on this beach, doesn't meet the county's own standards under the white sand ordinance. And the court has ruled that sand can't be placed there. So that begs the question, what are we doing here? Why are we spending $5,000 more to send out easements for a project that cannot legally go forward? Moreover, you guys have seen the response rates thus far. 433 returned easements, 388 voted no, 45 voted yes, and we want to spend $5,000 more sending out more easements? And I sent you all the maps, and we actually documented on these maps where all the noes are versus where the yeses are. Did you all get the email yesterday with these in them?
Yes.
Okay. And you can see the green ones are the yes, and then these are the public parks. So even if the rest of them came in as yeses, there is no viable project from an engineering standpoint. We've got the answer that you need to terminate this project, and I think. We've got the answer that you need to terminate this project, and I think as the county administrator said, do you want this to go forward? And, and I would just suggest that it is fiscally irresponsible to continue to waste money on this project, that nobody wants, that legally cannot go forward. A US District Court judge said, and I'll read, he found, ordered and adjudged that any sand placed upon plaintiff's beach property in the course of the Hurricane and Storm Damage Reduction Project must conform to the standards of section four point oh seven point oh three of the LDC. Two, that because the borrowed material as described for the project is prohibited under four point oh seven point oh three, such material may not be placed upon the plaintiff's property. Is the board going to deal with this issue? Or is it going to ignore it and kick the can down the road to January as if this order didn't exist? I mean, the court has said you can't go forward with the project, but here we are spending five thousand more dollars for this. And there's also a, a recommendation from the TDC that says go out and get more sand samples. And I think that was a sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars, and it hasn't come back to the board yet, and hopefully it doesn't, because that would be a waste of money as well. So I would encourage the board, if you don't want to do it today, set another meeting in, in the southern part of the county next month, and, and have an honest debate on this issue. Does a project go forward or doesn't it? Does it make fiscal sense? You know, the citizens need leadership here, and leadership is not throwing good money after bad, and that's what five thousand dollars spending in this case would do. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Gentlemen, it's, it's my contention, yes, we've gotten them back, and there's a, a great number that are opposed to the project, but these people that we haven't sent these to have a right to speak, and if they all say no, well, then that's their right, but I think they have a right to express their opinion as well, you know? So, you know, five thousand in the grand scheme of this project is, I think we need to hear from everybody, then we know, you know?
Well, yeah, and I agree, I think we need to, leadership is doing what you say you're going to do, and that's what we said we were going to do. We were going to give everybody their opportunity, we were going to collect them until the end of January, they're going to come back, and then at that point, we're going to have the discussion that, about that. So, you know, I, I think we just, we have to, we have to stay the course and, and, and get that done, because we promised the people that own property on the beach that we would.
If they all come back no, well, then we have heard.
That's right.
That's, you know.
We have, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item for your consideration is a request to approve a change order for Tetra Tech in the amount of fifty-two hundred and seventy dollars on the parking permit design contract for additional scope of work associated with connecting sidewalks and some landscaping and stormwater systems regarding the parking study. The recommended spaces that were added. When they begin the engineering and design process, realize that there needed to be some additional connections for sidewalks with the new parking, some additional work maybe tying in the existing space to the new spaces from a stormwater landscaping standpoint. So this will allow Tetra Tech to implement those changes into their overall scheme and design of those new parking spaces.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment?
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, just, just so we're sure, we're still below the two million dollar mark in terms of the professional services.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, Commissioners, for your consideration is the agreement with Resurrection Church for utilizing a parking facility during the season months. They have made arrangements, South Walton Utilities, to utilize some space to build parking for their church. They have been gracious enough to allow the TDC to partner with them to utilize that space for a term of twenty years during the season, and to use it as a place to shuttle folks to and from the beach. So you were provided that late yesterday, I believe, but in order to move the thing forward, we would recommend its approval.
Commissioners, we do have one small contingency. There is a little confusion about the actual location of part of that parking lot, and we, I tried to verify by eyes over the weekend and just simply couldn't. Would you make the approval contingent upon the TDC being satisfied with the location of the, of the property as described? And I think we'll be okay.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And motion and a second. Any further board discussion?
Yeah, just had a question. I'd like to see a sidewalk on Miramar Beach Drive, if possible, because if you park here, I assume you're going to the beach.
I think I'm going to do it, a shuttle was what was...
Oh, really?
Yeah. And I, my understanding is it's not the parking lot that's there, it's the parking lot that's on the west side of Miramar Beach Drive.
Yeah.
Which has currently, currently got trees on it.
Okay, okay. So they were going to shuttle people to the beach. How far is it? Do we know how far it is down to the, to the first beach access? Do we have a, we don't have the map of the...
We don't have an exact distance, but it's not far.
Okay.
We'll start to look at the potential or possibility of putting a sidewalk in.
Okay, yeah. That would just be, that would just be an idea, is if, especially if we've got it for twenty years, might be nice to be able to put a sidewalk somewhere along that road.
Any further board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And Mr. Sunday has some updates, I believe.
We've got one last item, the...
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. We had scheduled a, an hour workshop on November the tenth to talk about the TDC reorganization. And thinking about that and looking at some things that may have been in the works to get there, of, of utilizing a professional DMO?
DMO.
Consultant to give us a presentation of what's going on in other places, what's works best, and maybe even recommendations of what would work best in our scenario. That's a two to three-hour presentation, and so we certainly don't believe we could fit it in there. So if that's something the board would like to do, we'd look at that facilitator and maybe a time, sometime, maybe even after the holidays. It depends on you guys and how quickly you want to try to get it done, if that's something you wish to do.
I think it would be, I think it'd be good to hear about the different options we have, and I talked to Stan about it, and I said, you know, maybe a two-hour, maybe a one-hour presentation public would be there, and then a one-hour question and answer, but I think beyond two hours, I, I think that that might be enough, but, and after the holidays, maybe in January, so that, you know, we can focus on it. And just give us the, yeah, just give us the options, and then we can discuss it, but without having some options and some information presented by somebody, I think the meeting on the, the tenth is, is just going to be kind of meaningless, I guess.
Is that your motion to cancel it?
So my motion would be...
Cancel that meaningless meeting?
My motion would be to cancel the three o'clock workshop and reschedule it for January at like a two-hour workshop sometime during a time where we don't have a board meeting back-to-back with long meetings and such.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Davis, do you need to, to publish the fact that the meeting, that the workshop is being changed?
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Notice.
And did we decide on a date, or?
In January.
January, okay. And Commissioners, just a couple of updates with, with the weather that we've had going on the last couple of days. The beach is currently flying, as of yesterday afternoon, double red flags, and they'll reassess that sometime today. Couple of dates that our staff has been probably contacting your office to schedule either a one-on-one appointment or a phone interview, or two things that we have in the works, strategic planning workshop, which is currently scheduled for November fourth, fifth, and sixth, with a public meeting at the annex on November fourth from four to six. And then the second workshop, or actually it's a meeting, is a public design charrette meeting that's scheduled for November seventeenth and eighteenth, with a public meeting on November seventeenth from four to six as well. And then in...
November seventeenth or December seventh?
November, I'm sorry.
November seventh?
November seventeenth and eighteenth. So the strategic planning, November, November fourth, fifth, sixth, public design charrette, November seventeen, eighteen. And the public meetings for each of those are on, on the first day at four PM.
And those are at the annex?
The strategic planning's at the annex, the public design charrette will be at the TDC conference room. And tho, those advertisements will be going out if they haven't already. And that's all I have.
Mr. Davis?
I have no items on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Get out, get out of here.
What's he been doing? It's all the other ones.
Commissioner Meadows?
Yeah, I don't have anything either.
Commissioner Commander?
I have one or two items. First of all, I would like to extend my best wishes to Sydney Knowles. I understand she has a brand-new ring on her finger. And so...
Not a heater ring, is it?
Bubble gum wrapper, but our best wishes to you, and congratulations to Big Dave, okay? Secondly, I had the pleasure of meeting a constituent last week in South Walton in Ada Day. I'll publicize the restaurant, Marie's Bistro, on thirty A, and noticed that they're having some trouble. It's, it's right there in Blue Mountain, you know? They're having some trouble getting customers because our signs say the road's closed, so everybody thinks everything's closed on the road. So these businesses, especially restaurants, are struggling to keep their doors open during this time. Is there any way, I know that we have the big signs up that say road closed, but can we put another sign or do something that says? We have two...
We have, we have, we have talked to these, all these folks, and we have two big signs in Grayton that say local business is open, two big, big, big flashing signs. Do we have them at the other end?
We do.
We do, we have them, yeah.
I didn't see one at, I didn't see one when I was there in Blue Mountain, but, you know, but is, if there's anything else we can do to let people know, I mean, I know they've got to go down and turn around if they go all the way down, but there, you know, two or three restaurants.
They've been out there for a couple of weeks, in, in fact.
They've been out there since the beginning. They didn't say that in the very beginning, but within a week or two after we had the detour, we changed them. There's two advanced variable message signs that say, it doesn't say road closed, it says bridge out, business is open on thirty A. That's, that's what the sign, it's the big flashing...
I was there Thursday, I didn't see it.
And there's two of them.
It's at two, it's at...
You have to come down two eighty-three.
It's just before you get to eighty-three, and then also just before you get to two eighty-three.
Yeah.
Because this man, he's a wonderful, nice man, was just, you know, I mean, it was lunchtime, and I think there were three of us in the restaurant, and we were all at the same table. So we need to help these folks, because I think they all understand, these bridges have to be repaired. I mean, there's no, we have to repair these bridges, but we need to help them.
Well, I think we could, you know, anytime that we can, we need to recommend to citizens, shop locally, you know, eat locally, you know, go out of your way to, to, to spend at these small businesses. You know, when county people are down there looking for a place to eat lunch, you know, just keep, keep all these businesses in mind, because the winter season, the off-season is tough anyway. And so, but we're, we're trying to do everything we can to keep, to keep people aware that this road is open for business, and, you know, please, you know, go down there and shop.
Have lunch, have a delightful lunch.
Sorry, if I could just mention one more thing. Commissioner Commander, what, what we have is, is three groups that we have to deal with putting up this detour, and it's very challenging. You've got the businesses who want everybody to go right to the very bitter end of the road and turn around and come back. You've got the people who live in those neighborhoods that don't want anybody coming down there seeking an alternate route through their subdivision, and you've got the people that's just trying to get from point A to point B on thirty A, that want the least amount of interruption. So trying to get the signage up, I've, I've learned through this process, it is challenging, and we cannot make all of them happy. I'm, I know the business is talking about it.
And I totally understand that, you know, but I come from a small business background, and I understand how tough it is for small business, you know, so anything we can do, put an advertisement in the paper, somebody run up and, you know, get, hire an airplane to go up and down, you know, whatever we can do to make people aware that, that the businesses are open on thirty A.
We've worked very hard trying to, and even TDC has helped out, and they've put up one of their variable message signs to help get the message out that the businesses are open, so I hope that we've done everything we can, but if you know of something else we can do, we'd be glad to try to do it.
Thank you, I appreciate it. My only other item was, a number of us attended a meeting at the sheriff's office last Friday, and were given some startling figures about the future of this county and how we're going to grow. We are responsible for the future. Those of us that are sitting at this table are responsible, so I know I'm going to get shocked by the two men sitting next to me, but I would like for us to have some kind of discussion between the board, the five of us, as to how do we, how do we go about looking towards the future? How are we going to provide infrastructure? How are we going to provide people that want to, to buy homes here and live here when in some places already can, how do we meet the needs of the citizens in this county twenty years from now? So maybe after the holidays, if we could have some kind of workshop before a regular meeting, discussing about how do we prepare this county for the next twenty years? You know, I've done a number of visioning, you know, since I've been in office, and I think this would just, it's time to do another one, and I think it would be good for the five of us to have a visiting session.
Would you be open to bringing in a consultant, a planner, a, you know?
I'm open to anything.
To kind of lead that, you know, because I've been thinking, I've really, and I'm going to meet with Representative Drake this week too, to talk about what, you know, his ideas of what we can do, but, but, you know, I'm, we, we just got three thirty-one four lane, I mean, so, and that was really hard, so I'm, yeah, a consultant would be great, I think, could give us some ideas so that we could reach forward and try to, and I agree, we need to deal with it, because it's going to be a, a million tourists, I believe, and twenty thousand new residents in five years, I believe were the numbers, so we're going to be growing. Our, our best kept secret is out now.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, anything we can do. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
I just got an email that one of our employees, Rusty Roic, Roark, his wife, wife passed away, so let's just remember that family in our prayers and...
For the Commissioners, Rusty's was a grader operator in my district, and he was the one that got hit by that semi on, down there at the four lane at Owl's Head. He's having, just coming back to work, and then have this tragedy hit him too. So please consider him and keep him in your prayers.
Anything else, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Chapman?
Commissioners, a couple of months ago, we got a call from a Mr. Weaver. Mr. Weaver's parents had passed away, and he inherited the house that they own in the Portland community. He was trying to fix it up and sell it, and as a result, he found out he, the banks were having some major difficulty, because at some point in time, and we believe around nineteen ninety-six, they went in there and arbitrarily designated the entire area around C-six Road and twenty as commercial. The only commercial, and it wasn't there in ninety-six, is a storage facility there on the northeast corner of it. Everything else, there's forty-one homes that are located in that block that's been Everything else, there's forty-one homes that are located in that block that's been designated as commercial and they're basically non-conforming. So if they were to blow down, burn down tomorrow, they could not rebuild back there based on the code. So I'm asking the board to, for us to direct staff to prepare a future land use map, amendment for the selected parcels and bring it back to the board for final authorization to advertise. Mr. Weaver was going to do a small scale, but he has opted at this point to allow this process to go forward and redesignate the residential areas and the churches so they'll allow, to be allowed to, to sell them or rebuild them if necessary. There still will be a portion, I don't know if Rick's got a map for that area or not, but in your, your package you ought to see, there is a, still general commercial located within that area, primarily that fronts Highway twenty and there's a little bit on the east side of C-six on the north end of it. So I'd ask the board to allow staff to move forward with the next step in the process.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Actually, I don't know if it needs it, but we can take the motion in second, but any further board discussion, public comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
That's all you have. Only thing I've got is a reminder to the public that on November the twelfth, Senator Gates and Representative Drake will be here to hear from the public about their issues and where they want to go in the future. So if you get the opportunity, the meeting will be held here in, in the boardroom, November the twelfth. I'm sorry, I believe it's at one thirty. It's either one or one thirty.
We'll get that information to you, yes, early in the afternoon, one to two thirty, I believe.
One to two thirty, okay.
I do have a question. Have we moved the November meeting, the last of the month, because of Thanksgiving yet? Okay, we'll, we'll talk about that when, next, next time? Okay. Somebody asked me that today and I'm thinking, I don't remember.
Okay. Okay, in accordance with Policy Twenty-seven, we allow the next fifteen minutes for people to come up and make public comments. Anyone wish to do so? Seeing none, we'll take a fifteen-minute break and then come back for our land use Fifteen minutes.
Good morning, Commissioner. We have one item on the agenda under Planning and Development Services and it is to authorize staff to advertise an amendment to Chapter five point oh-two oh-two, five point oh-two oh-three, and five point oh-two oh-four of the Walton County Land Development Code related to parking. This is an item that has been on our list for a couple of years now. As you know, we had several, had several outstanding items that we were trying to work through to kind of bring some kind of final conclusion to those items. This is the parking portion of that. As you may recall, and as the agenda item kind of states as far as some of the explanation and history of this, this began a couple of years ago. The current proposal you have in front of you has been pared down from what we originally proposed a couple of years ago. It primarily deals with two, well, actually, three areas. The first one is for lots less than a half an acre that have, for residential property. We are requesting to sort of bar what we do in Grayton Beach as far as the parking standards based on square footage. Currently, it's based on the number of bedrooms. This would modify that to go to a square footage to determine the parking for lots less than a half an acre. The second part of this proposal is to address outdoor seating. As you may recall, from the previous proposal we had a couple of years ago, outdoor seating is not factored into the, any kind of parking equation with required parking. This would address that and it'd be a fractional percentage required for outdoor seating as it states in the ordinance. And then also, third part of this is, is for any kind of joint parking agreement be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. And that's basically the three parts to this. Again, staff, we, this has been on our list for some time. We're trying to work through that list of outstanding items and we're looking to either for, to move forward with it or if we need to, to halt, stop the process, that's, that's totally, you know, fine as well. But again, we just want to bring it forward for, for direction on how to move forward with this.
May I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Commander, you're up.
I certainly agree where the houses are concerned because we all know, they build a house and we have a study and we have a gym and we have a big laundry room and gee whiz, once that house is built, all those are turned into bedrooms so that the people, and then it becomes a, what we call a monster house. And, and then how can you, you know, these people come down with five, six, seven cars with only three parking places. I think going forward, we can't do anything about the ones that are built, but I think it is a good idea to base it on the square footage. That way, they can keep it a laundry room or they can make it a bedroom, but, but it's got to be available. Because our only other alternative is to start ticketing people and, and getting the sheriff to pull them off the right-of-way because it's getting more and more dangerous. So that part of the ordinance, I'm in favor of going forward with.
Okay.
Can't hear you. Turn on your mickey phone.
This, this ordinance started before I was in office, so I'm wondering, did we have a committee of realtors, of, of, you know, specialized people? It seems like we've got a, you know, a, a, an area that this affects and it's mainly the coastal, the beach. I can't see where an ordinance like this would be beneficial for the north end, for instance. I mean, it's not, it's not like one set size fits all, so I'm, and I'm trying to get my arms around, the main reason we're doing this ordinance is for monster houses? Is that why, what we're trying to, I mean, you know, I always ask when we're doing an ordinance, what are we trying to accomplish? What are we trying to, you know, to focus in on? And I, I've, I've heard you say monster houses.
Well, that's a term, and you know, it's to keep people from building a house and, and, and saying we only have three bedrooms, so we only need, let's say, three parking places. I don't know what, but then turning every other room in that house into a bedroom and everybody that's in that bedroom drives the car down there. Then we have cars in other people's yards, we have them in the right-of-way, we have them where they don't belong. If it's based on square footage going forward, has nothing to do with the houses that are built now, then that way, they should provide adequate parking and anybody, I mean, should provide adequate parking, especially if you're going to rent your house, you know.
And Commissioner Fagan's add, this is for, primarily the issue we have is, is with houses and small lots. And as you read this, it's for a half acre or less. And so if you have more than a half acre, and I think a lot of the, I'm not sure, I'm sure there's some small and half acre north of the bay, but I think predominantly a lot of those are larger lots north of the bay, so this will be half acre or less. And one of the issues, I think, that how this came up is we had several issues where you had small lots and people built houses and with the setbacks and so forth, you can still get a, a, you know, a, a nice-sized house on a half acre lot, but then when you start doing the parking, many times, as you said, Commissioner Commander, you do have rooms that are labeled on the plans and meet the definition or do not meet the definition of a, of a bedroom and so therefore they aren't counted. Maybe another owner comes in and buys it and turns that into a bunk room or something like that. And that's, that's where the problems we encountered were coming from. And primarily during the peak times, and then you have people parking on the street and the streets were getting blocked. If you, I know a couple of years ago, one spring break, we had several of these issues that came up that kind of brought this to our attention a couple of years ago. And that's, I think, what sort of inspired this, this change is, spring break and summer, a couple of years ago, we had an unusually heavy number of people parking on streets and were blocking streets and so forth. So that's kind of the, this came from.
Isn't this what, isn't this what Grayton Beach did when they got into a lot of the monster houses and that they adopted a neighborhood plan and they went to square footage versus bedrooms? And I think that, I think that solved a lot of their issues over there.
Can we ask Mr. Blue to comment on how that was accomplished there? Mr. Blue, could?
More than happy. I was planning to talk with him.
Please come up, go ahead and state your name for the record, too.
Lloyd Blue, for the record, last name B.L.U.E., homeowner and business owner in South Walton for thirty, forty years. I had the privilege of helping put the ordinance together in Grayton, so I know whereof I speak. If you check the minutes from fifteen years ago, you'll find me prominently in the minutes addressing the board and Larry, you were a commissioner at that point. In Grayton, I think the issues in Grayton also talk to me why this is an inappropriate approach to deal with the problem. In Grayton Beach, you had the oldest historic community down here. You had a, a place that had a unique cottage character about it. And so we, as a community, got together and said that we wanted to, as a philosophical position, maintain that small, smaller cottage, you know, feel and also look at whether or not we wanted to continue to have houses that were four stories that went side to side on the lots. Now, keep in mind, the average lot in Grayton Beach, you know, under the eighteen ninety plaid and subsequent plaids was a fifty-foot by a hundred and forty-foot lot or about seven thousand feet, which is an eighth of an acre. And so when you built a four-story house that went forty feet wide and used the reduced setbacks, you had a huge house, some of them advertised for, you know, twenty, twenty-five people, they had two parking spaces. And so we, as a community, came together, but, you know, one of the key things that we did was we lowered the height from fifty feet to forty feet with the idea being that you would then have three-story houses maximum. And then we added the square footage. And with, with the square footage, of course, one of the, the proposals in this ordinance takes that Grayton ordinance a little bit further because it doesn't allow tandem parking beyond two spaces. We really didn't care, you know, whether you stacked, you know, six cars in the driveway as long as you provided the spaces that went with it. But for Grayton Beach, that worked because the goal was to keep the, the small cottages and, and to make sure that what cottages that were built there or what houses were built that were smaller in scale, they had adequate parking or at least parking that was far greater than, than what we had. You know, if you take that Grayton ordinance and tighten it up, which the tandem parking would do, you know, unless you're prepared as a commission to decide that as a philosophy, the county, the south end of the county is going to go to cottages, you know, as opposed to, you know, other houses. And it sounds like too, that you're, you're attempting to solve a rental problem and at the same time putting restrictions and limitations on normal homeowners. The average size of a home, according to the census in Walton County, is two-point-three-eight people. According to the property appraisers, the average house in South Walton runs over twenty-eight-hundred feet. So for the, for the normal person that's down there building a house to live in and not, everybody down there is doing rentals. So for the normal person that's living down there that's got two-point-three people in their house and their house is about three thousand feet, mandating that they have to have six parking spaces, which only four of those can go in the garage and the driveway, may be excessive. It wouldn't be excessive if they're renting the house out to twenty people, but, you know, that, that goes into the, the rental issue and not the issue of what's appropriate for people's homes. I just think that if, you know, if we're going to do an ordinance that, that's going to try to solve the problem, it's not going to be, take Grayton's ordinance that comes from a specific background and a specific approach unless y'all are prepared to adopt that approach, you know? And if, and if that is what the commission is doing, then, you know, we ought to just take it head-on. And if the, and if the plan is, is that we ought to talk about, you know, rentals and if, you know, some of the rental companies, they make it very clear to the people and they have them sign an acknowledgement that says, you know, you bring, you can bring three cars, we have four parking spaces or we have three parking spaces, you're limited to that, don't bring more than that. I don't know that that's going to be the solution, but people who are renting their houses are supposed to be registering with the county anyway and paying their bed taxes and so you have a mechanism, you know, for enforcement. But I just don't believe that having lived in Grayton, having been part of the discussion in Grayton and having helped implement the ordinance that was in Grayton, that y'all want to look at taking that and expanding it county-wide without, you know, making those decisions about those underpinnings. And I think the issue of not to be confused with rental, because I don't think that it's fair for the normal homeowner that, you know, wants to have a home here and wants to live here, that he has to have rules that are designed, you know, to address, you know, a rental problem when he's not, you know, looking to be a rental problem. And that, you know, on one hand, we say, let's maintain as much open space as we can, let's maintain our vegetation, let's do these other things, and then we say, okay, but you're going to have to put in, you know, extra parking whether you need it or not because, you know, it may work. So I, I just would suggest to you that I don't believe that you solve the issue by taking Grayton's plan unless you're prepared to follow the, the philosophical, you know, underpinnings of what Grayton was to do. And I think that, and then, of course, you get the issue of, you know, what is conforming, non-conforming, you know? And of course, we, you know, took that up some on the coastal lake issue, but, you know, and I assume that one of the things that staff would be doing would be going back to not make every house that's been built, you know, non-conforming because they don't have the, have the parking. But that's down the road if you get there. And I think the same things can be said about the outdoor seating. You know, why you would take Point Washington, which is a historic district, and take their neighborhood plan, which the neighborhood plans by definition are tailored to fit, you know, the specific needs and location that the plan is being adopted in, and think that that plan works, you know, throughout, you know, the county for outdoor seating, you know, I think that that's equally has some deficiencies. And then finally, you know, this ordinance, as with most of them, you know, won't really apply to seaside, Rosemary Beach, Watercolor, Watersound, Alice Beach, you know, the other DRI's which covers, you know, most of the problem areas. And then you also get the PUDs, you know, with specific parking requirements that are exempted. So who, who winds up with this? You know, the, the burden is going to fall in large part on the occasional lot owner that wants to build his house to live in and be penalized. Are you going to affect the mom-and-pop operations, you know, that are small businesses that are out there because the big boys, you know, they're exempt? And so, you know, I personally think that, you know, this ordinance should be revisited and better directed towards the issues that it's trying to accomplish, you know, and, and not using Grayton. Or Point Washington is the starting point. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
While he's coming up, and I think that's, I think we started with these two. That doesn't mean that, that we're not going to clean them up. I mean, I've, I've heard the problems, I haven't heard a solution. I think most property owners, I don't want you parking in front of my house and your three-point-five other guests you have at your house. So is the, you know, how do we solve this problem? Because it is a problem. That's the only thing we're trying to do here, you know?
Well, and, and after you've talked, I'd like to add a few.
Contemplate.
Yeah.
State your name for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Andy McAlexander, M.C.A.L.E.X.A.N.D.E.R. Not to echo completely what Lloyd was stating, but it is a tourist problem and it is not a local problem. In my opinion, as a realtor, you're putting all homes constructed and all businesses in operation prior to the adoption of this ordinance in, almost all of them, not all, in a non-conforming situation, which like the situation in Portland that Commissioner Chapman was speaking of, it makes lending from an institution problematic as well as insurance and just the normal transaction of that business almost impossible because it's a non-conforming use. And who's going to buy a house or a business where in the event of a catastrophe, they can't rebuild? I mean, it's, it needs to be, in my opinion, a tourist issue handled by the tourist development or the, the TDC and enforced with parking penalties, parking tickets. Put a meter maid out there, give people a parking ticket as opposed to just say a slap on the wrist, don't do that. It's just, it's, it's almost a lawless situation where there's no repercussions for the people parking. It's a tourist problem, it's not a residence problem. And I feel the adoption. And I feel the adoption of this ordinance is going to cause an economic stranglehold on the South County.
Thank you. Commissioner Meadows.
Yeah, a couple of comments. I think, I think that we, we need, we need to, we need to do something. And I think this is a good start. I think that, because it's less than half acre, I think that's good. I think that you could probably even say, south of ninety-eight, because south of ninety-eight is where the rentals are. And my neighborhood used to be a single-family place where people lived. It is now all rental. Everybody is, once the neighborhood goes with one or two rentals, the rest of it goes, because it's very difficult to live there. I'm the only full-time resident that lives, I think, within probably several blocks, but in my neighborhood. So, it's all gone rental. People are buying houses, are tearing them down, they're building bigger houses. There's a new six thousand square foot house on the corner, on a fifty-five, a hundred and twenty foot lot. It's got three thousand square feet of porches. It's, you know, so, this is the market. This is what people are building. And, you know, if you're south of ninety-eight, most of the time, you know, you're either buying your house to live in, with the idea that you're going to rent it eventually, or you're going to have it as an investment, and you're going to rent it eventually. If you sell it, you sell it to somebody, and the second person rents it. So, I mean, I think we need to face the reality that we are becoming, South Walton is becoming a resort rental place. And, and, and the issue began, the issue is with, I think, the bedrooms, the number of bedrooms. I think if we clear that up, we also need to clear up some of the language in here. I think there's a couple of places where we could, we could define it better. But I also think that the, the twenty percent reduction that we give to keep parking off thirty A is not really working, because when you give them a twenty percent reduction, what happens is, to keep them off thirty A, they park on thirty A, because they don't have enough parking. So, that's not really working either. I think, I think what we could do is, this is really for new businesses and new houses being built. We could, we could make everything that's existing conforming, like we did on the Coastal Dune Lake. In other words, if you have a business, and something happens to it, you rebuild it, then you rebuild it to the footprint and to the existing number of spaces that you had. Because I think that would be something that would help the, the small businesses. But for the most part, it is, it is these, these big, big houses that are being built and rented, and the parking is just kind of bleeding over into everything. And it's also, any new, new development that would come on, maybe south of ninety-eight, if they're planning outdoor dining, you know, they need to have the parking for it. Because what happens is, they'll have two tables inside, and then the entire outside will be patio and dining and all that. So, I don't see why there's any reason why we can't ask new businesses to, to do this. That would help tremendously. The other thing that, that to enforce, to, to give people tickets that are parked at people's houses is going to be difficult. And two, we don't know who these bed tax people are, because it's illegal to get their names. So, we can't, the TDC can't, can't enforce that. And, and so, I think if we had some decent rules going forward, that we could head off a lot of the additional problems. I think that, like Sarah was saying, what, you know, how are we going to handle all this growth? How are we going, where are we going to put everybody? Well, I think one of the things is, is that we talked about was, I'd like to see a parking, park, park and ride lot included in some of the land use categories. It's, it's allowable, because right now, we don't have it. I know a lot of places are talking about parking their employees off-site, and trolley them to their, to their businesses. So, I think, I think there's a lot of things that we can do going forward, but I think it's worth having some public input on it, some public comment. So, I, I think it's worth at least advertising it, and taking public comment on it, and, and looking at, at these issues.
I've got, I've got a question on your account. Mr. McAndrew talked about the enforcement on the people that would need to get tickets. Why wouldn't that work?
I might be able to answer that.
Go ahead.
All right. Would counsel you correct me, because it's been a year or two since I was doing it. But the thing about it is, for a parking ticket to be enforceable, you've got to have, if you write a UTC, Uniform Traffic Citation for this parking violation, then it's linked into the state, and the state, with their reciprocal agreements, if you're from Kentucky, and you get a parking ticket, and if you don't pay it, they can suspend your license to you. Do, with those states that we have reciprocal agreements with, which we have with most of them. Now, if you go and use a county, write them a ticket, leave it there, and of course, under the UTC, you've got to have a person there to cite them. Because that requires a signature, or at least acknowledgement, okay? If you use the.
Signature of the person that's the violator?
Violator.
Okay.
And then, if you use the other one, you can take that and blow your nose with it, because there's nothing you can do. There's another one.
Write that down.
There's where you run into the issue with the, with the traffic citation, or the parking citation. Now, my concern is, whenever John Doe turns in his plans for this house, and it's a three-bedroom house, he's getting it approved based upon the code and the life safety issues in there. Every bedroom must have a three-by-five egress out of that room. Now, when you go in there and take a big room that was a den, and you haven't got a three-by-five window in there, or another door, and turn it into a bedroom, somebody dies in there, you can go back to the owner of that house, and that's a pretty good liability to take on, in the event something happens. So, that's the other thing. And I kind of agree, we've got to come up with some solution, because building of these homes, they are submitted based upon the code, and then, after the fact, they go in there and either knock down walls, or it's already been built big enough that they could put a bunk room in there, just to put more people. And I don't know, Mr. Blue, I agree with what you're saying. If he's the owner that's going to build a house there and live there, he has no intent of ever renting it, which we don't really know for sure, then, yeah, I wouldn't want to have him take up half his yard with six particular lot, parking spots. But if, if he is going to build it to rent it, then we've got to somehow contain the number of vehicles that can be there, without encroaching on the right-of-way or other people's property.
Go, go ahead.
And I think that's the problem. I can tell you anything, oh, shoot, I've been saying for years I was going to lose fifty pounds, and it hasn't happened yet. I can tell you anything to get my DO. And once I get my DO, then I can do whatever I want to with it. I mean, and you're right, they sell that house, or maybe they fall on hard times, and, you know, and, and want to rent it. Then, you know, what they have promised the county, they, they're not going to do. They say, this is not to hurt businesses, it's not to hurt people. It is moving forward. How many million people are we going to have here in the next ten years, that, there, again, we've got to look twenty years down the road. We can't just look at today.
Right. And if we don't do something about it, it's going to get so bad that there, you know, something will happen. I mean, you know, you can't go into people's yard and start giving them parking tickets. And you certainly don't want to go into, like, the V restaurant, and give everybody that's trying to get into that restaurant a ticket that's parked out on three ninety-five, or Stinky's, or, you know, all these places. So, what we're trying to do is, is provide off-street, on-street parking for a lot of these places to use. So, we're, we're doing that, but we, I think we do need to look at this. This is something we do need to take a, yeah, take a look at.
You know, I, I think that's why, we're emphasizing, everything built from, say, today forward, no existing business or house at this point.
Right. It would be conforming, yeah.
But if you start with the premise that, okay, I'm going to come, and I'm going to build my house, and I'm just going to live in it, is there a feasible way to say, but if you convert it to a rental property, now you must have additional parking spaces? So that, so that the person that comes says, I'm just going to make this my house?
I think what you do in that, in that event is, you know, let's say you're coming in, and you're building a house, and you're building, like this gentleman said, that he was building it for his family, it's six thousand square feet.
Yeah.
And it's got, I think, eight bedrooms. You know, there is a front yard setback that's twenty feet, and it is the distance of the house. So, what you do in that event is, if you only want to provide three spaces for your family, then you don't cut down the rest of the trees, and you provide your three spaces. A lot of these now have garages, so, you know, it's, it's, you have that ability. But what you do is, you don't, you know, you just, you don't fill up your front yard with, with other things. You leave it so that if you do, in the, in the event that you sell it, or that you do rent it, you've got that twenty foot out in front of your house.
Okay.
That you can convert into parking.
If you convert it, at that point in time, you would be required to have the additional parking spaces.
Yeah.
Is that feasible to?
And Commissioner, to me, anytime you have to retrofit something, it makes it very difficult, because they may have, the house designed, if, if you can have the parking provided while the house is being designed, then it's much, much more effective after the fact. Retrofitting is more difficult. And also, you know, whether we'd be aware or not if it's being.
How would we know?
And it may be rented one year, and not the next year, and.
Of course, you've got people that are required to remit their bed tax to.
Correct.
The thing, and it's.
But, but I, I guess from my point of view, kind of, you know, retrofitting it after the fact would be difficult.
For parking spaces?
Because, because many times, the house, the house layout on the lot, you know, if, if you have to account for parking spaces, you can, you can arrange your house on that lot to accommodate more parking, whereas if you go forward, and maybe you only provide three, for example, your house design or arrangement on the lot may be different.
Wouldn't that be a business decision cost, if you wanted to convert your, your home to a rental?
I, I guess it would be, but many times, I mean, short of us knowing which ones are being rented and which ones aren't, that, that, to me, would be a little bit problematic. I mean, it's not absolutely undoable, but it would definitely be a little more, it'd be, you know, it would be more difficult to try to enforce that.
Ms. Bushy.
Do you want me to spell my last name again? E-O-U-S-H-Y. There's a variety of themes on this issue that you probably don't want to hear again, but so, first and foremost, you know, this right-of-way parking issue in South Walton County, I'm not going to speak above ninety-eight, okay? Because that's a whole different animal, when we're talking about parking, building, et cetera. But when we have right-of-way parking, absolutely wall-to-wall in South Walton, it's a safety issue. This isn't just about convenience, or whether people rent or they don't rent, you know, two point three people may live, on average, in a house today. That doesn't mean that five years from now, it's going to be two point three people, even if they're full-time residents. I, I mean, some, sooner or later, we, we have to get a big picture for the future. And the big picture is, we keep growing and growing, and we've got problems with parking today. I live in a single-family residential neighborhood, and many of you already know this, because of parking issues. You know, what Commissioner Chapman mentioned about trying to enforce parking, I can vouch for every bit of it. I can't tell you the times that a deputy has said, ma'am, I, you know, we'll stay, we'll try to stay here till somebody comes back, but we can't ticket them without them here for this particular thing. Or, you know, they're parked on somebody's property, but only the person who owns the property can have them ticketed or towed, and guess what? Try to get a tow truck there. I mean, it's just ridiculous how difficult enforcement truly can be. Our own county ordinance about parking has contradictory statements in it, and the Walton County Sheriff's Office would be delighted to point them out to you, just like they pointed them out to me. So, so trying to, and, and it's a thirty dollar ticket most of the time, which frankly, people don't care. I've had people flat-out tell me, it's worth thirty dollars to park here, no matter that they're blocking a whole lane of a two-lane road. So, the parking issue is a problem. The parallel parking along thirty A, and along residential areas that have narrow streets is a health and safety issue. You know, little kids walk out, animals walk out, people with strollers and things that want to be able to walk through the neighborhood, or having to dodge cars. But on this ordinance, I don't know how feasible this is, but it seems to me that there could be a combination of the number of bedrooms that are in a house, the square footage that's in the house, and I've lived in communities that plain do not allow parking, unless it's in, on your own property. You know, it's in your driveway, it's in your garage. And frankly, those communities seem very high-end because of that, because there's not this wall-to-wall, people are parked everywhere, and not only in other people's yards, which you point out, and that's material. But I, I'd love to see, that this may not be the perfect ordinance, I don't, I don't know, but I would love to see you all really, before you start changing ordinances to something that then there's an unintended consequence, and that happens, we all run into that, really try to have maybe a group of people that represent different interests to help you, or, or just see, is there a possibility of an ordinance that actually says that if you build a property, you're required to have all vehicles park on that property? I mean, can that be done here?
That's the way it currently is written. And the current ordinance says you have to provide them one sign. Unless you're in a PUD or something, usually the ownership parking is not allowed.
And that, and that used to work, but, you know, we have a situation, and this is, this is the market, is big, big houses, a lot of people are renting in those houses, and they all bring their own vehicle. And the houses were never designed, it was never designed to accommodate that. But that's the reality today, is that they bring five or six cars for, you know.
Then you're right back to enforcement. So, like, I, you've got to start somewhere. I mean, we can't keep, we can't keep going forward the way we have now, because what we have now hasn't, hasn't worked. It's, it's created these issues. So, I'd love to see you all, I know that's an opposing view to what you've heard before, but I would love to see you say, for every, you know, so many square feet, and/or for every bedroom, too, whichever is the greater. Because, for instance, if you have somehow a twelve-hundred-square-foot house, and by the way, I have one of these. I have a two-thousand-square-foot house, right at two-thousand-square-foot, it's a rental house, that has five bedrooms. And they are used as bedrooms, and there's also a sleeper sofa in the living room. So, this house can actually sleep sixteen people. Now, we have room to park probably about ten cars. Now, that doesn't mean they won't have to play shuffle the cars, but they can park ten cars, but it's only two thousand square feet. So, you know, there could be an argument that it only needs, you know, four spots, and yet, I can tell you consistently, we have at least six or seven cars that rent, and they have people come, and we never have a problem with overflow onto thirty A, and it's a house right on thirty.
What size is the lot, though?
The lot is, well, that particular one is eighty feet wide, and, you know, it's a beach, it's a beach.
The one on stilts?
It's one of the, one of the ones on them.
Okay, yeah. Because that, yeah, if you have a stilt house, you can park a lot of cars underneath.
Yeah, but I, we made a drive, we made not only a driveway, we made a big turnaround. But anyway, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I do, I just do hope that you'll consider that what, what's, what exists today has created the problem you're trying to address. So, you know, it's going to be unpopular to change things. People don't like change. They, none of us really like change, and, but if you don't start somewhere and make it going forward, it's just going to compound the problem. Thank you.
Quick question about the, the inability or inability to enforce the parking ticket. Is that just if it's a state violation, or is that a county violation, that, that they have to have someone present in order to issue a ticket?
Well, you could probably issue a parking citation for a county ordinance, depending on how it's put together, without somebody being there. But like she said, it's just the price of the vacation. If it's a thirty-dollar ticket, I may pay it, or I get back to Kentucky, and I don't pay it. There's no way that if you even come back into the state. There's no way that if you even come back into the state with a county, that you can somehow, you might run across them, run them, find out they got an outstanding parking ticket, but that's very hard to do and very limited. But that's the problem with the UTC, it requires a signature. Now, I know they made a change where you don't, they don't necessarily have to sign it anymore, but they at least are there in front of you where you, you tell them what their violation is. So, but the county thing, I, it's a major enforcement, and I cannot see the sheriff even jumping out there and wanting to do that.
And that's why, that's why you do with these new places coming in, if you have outdoor dining, then they have, they have adequate parking. And the homes being built now have adequate parking, because most of people are looking to someday rent that house. Everybody that I know that's building the houses have got, or leaving, or putting a lot of parking because they know that's...
But if I understand you correctly, you're saying, okay, we'll take, if you're, if you're intending to build your house to live in, then that's fine, you've got your, your spaces, but if you convert, or sell it to someone who converts, then they're going to have to provide additional parking spaces. So you won't, you won't be burdening the person that wants to make it their home, but anybody that wants to convert it to a rental property would have to, to take it.
See, I don't think there's any way of tracking that. Once I get my DO, I can, I can...
I'll tell you how you track it, is what happens, is the neighbors start complaining. You know, you, you turn, you convert your house into a rental, and all of a sudden, there's 10 cars out there and you, they're in your, they're all over the place. And so, you know, it's like everything else we have, it's almost, you know, complaint-driven, unless you, you know, unless you go to them and say, we're converting, and, you know, but I think you can just assume that all the houses, unless they're, unless they're in a gated community with a no-rental policy, that eventually, I think, I see, South Walton is begun, going to be a rental resort place. Most people I know that lived there have moved and are moving out of there, north of And that's just, that's the direction we're going, because, you know, people see that they can just make so much money off of these rentals that...
Mr. Chairman, I could add, I think there's been some good comments, and I know Mr. Blue had mentioned the average person, the 2.8 people per home, and I think that's probably accurate. I thought the idea of applying this south of 98 was a, probably a pretty good solution to that, because I, I think Commissioner Meadows is right, that that's where, just anecdotally thinking back, that's where most of the problems that I've, I'm aware of are happening in south of 98.
I have a question. Take all this discussion and kind of bring it back to us?
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask for some clarity and direction, and this will certainly help. I've heard a couple of you mention taking the existing residential units and businesses and at a point in time, consider them conforming. Is that direction the board would like us to include some language so that as we go forward, we know that issue's been put to bed?
And I have a question. Suppose there's a neighborhood and it's not built out, it started, it's half-built out, so would the whole development be grandfathered?
That's a good question. As I asked that question, do we want to make it conforming just for parking requirements or conforming across the board? Because you have some that have use issues potentially and...
I think it's, I think it's just for, just for parking. If they change the use of something, obviously they need to come in and tell us that they're converting to something else, and that, you know, at that point, that's a change of use.
Right.
I'm sorry, if I can, if I'm going to convert my house, I ain't telling nobody.
Well, if you convert it to a restaurant, eventually people are going to realize it, you know, they're...
I mean, that's what we're talking about.
But I think if, if that's the position the board's taking and wishes that to carry on, whatever form that carry on is, that's one issue that can be set aside, that if, if you're currently non-conforming with your business or, or would become non-conforming, that this, your, it's not your intent, that this ordinance ever had, does not impact those or their ability to rebuild in the future, barring some catastrophe.
Right.
Okay. So, Mike, can we make sure that whatever the next iteration is, and whatever the board decides to do with it, but that's part of it that...
Yes, sir, we certainly can. Yes, sir.
And look at, you know, I think there are some, you know, like if you're building a house in Seaside, there, there was a town code that you had to have. And if you're building one in, but if there's any other, like a neighborhood, like let's say, I don't know, Lake Place is gated and they don't allow rentals, but let's see Gulf Trace or something.
They allow rentals.
You know, we'd have to look at the...
Provide some measures for those communities that, that are, have no, have a no-rental policy.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we are talking about that area south of 98 concerned in this, because we sure don't want these to apply to a guy like me, he's got a 10-acre spot with a house on it, they have to have no more than X number.
I think you should have 10 parking places. And I think we have those issues in South Walton still. There's, you know, I know lots of residents that are not going to rent. I mean, my son, for one, he's got a, we've got a 3,000-square-foot house, there's two adults, so I don't see, I mean, I wish there was some way we could delineate between the rental versus the local. I mean, I just don't see, we, we, we regulate everybody to death now, and I just don't see, I think it's, you know, first it was really ever-reaching because we were doing the whole county, I like the conversation that we're not now, but I still want to protect those people and not put more regulations on them because we have, you know, tourists that are causing, you know, so if we could direct our solution more to the real issue as opposed to everyone, but we're doing that.
Somebody like, like that, you wouldn't, if you're going to live in your house and you're going to, you know, you, you don't have any problems. Eventually, though, if he decides he gets a bigger house and he says, I think I'll rent this one, at that time, I think that's when, that's when you have to start looking at, well, you know...
We just said we're, we were going to make those conforming, so they will... Well, true, but what if I suppose I wanted to go build a 3,000-square-foot house? And I, so I did, and I, you know, one person, I shouldn't have to have six parking places. I mean, this is what it says. It says if I build a 3,000-square-foot house, I have to have six parking spaces. Well, is that going to lead to selective enforcement? I mean, I know where we're trying to get. We want to stop all the monster houses, all the, but, but somehow it's affecting me locally if I'm not, you know, I don't want someone telling me I have to put six parking lots, I mean, six parking spaces in my lot, in my yard.
It, it should only impact you if you decide to change from living in it to renting it out, and that's, that's what I'm trying to say.
Right, so we need to study that. We need to, you know, so we need to decide that.
There's an issue with that, I, I'll defer to Mark on this one. I know that three or four years ago, we were looking at, I forgot what issue it was, and there was a state law that was, had recently passed at that time, that prevented, I guess, the treatment of rental homes being any different than a single...
Differentiating between rentals and...
Well, that's true. Now, there was a slight amendment to that ordinance, of that statute, not last session, but year, session before, in another county, which we're monitoring very closely, has attempted to regulate short-term rentals pursuant to that amendment. In that case, they've survived the challenge in the circuit court, they're now at the Fifth District Court of Appeal, so we're monitoring it pretty carefully. I, I'm of the opinion that it probably won't survive that second challenge, but we're going to see if...
They're limiting the occupancy rates over a phased-in period. That's, that's kind of different. I don't think we're trying to, trying to get rid of monster houses, I think we're just trying to make commensurate parking for big houses.
And they had, in their findings, in fact, they had the exact same issues we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and our goal from staff is trying to get as much parking off the street and onto the property as we can.
Yeah, so I think we have to think about that. What do you do about the people who, who are building a house and don't want to have to provide all that parking?
And unfortunately, folks, let's get down to the fact that we can't make it perfect. We can't make it, but, there again, we all heard last Friday how many people are moving to this county.
They're not going to live down there?
They're going to live down there a while.
They're going to live north of 98. They're going to live in Chapman's district, Sarah's district, and y'all's district.
I have 10 acres next to my place, if anybody wants to...
I'm ready for them to come to mine, I need some recreational plat feet, man.
Well, you, you've heard a number of the issues. I would like him to come back with a, a different write-up to see how many of those issues you can accommodate.
We, we'll certainly do that, yes, sir.
Take any action.
Let me throw one more thing out, going back to Commissioner Jones's 3,000-square-foot house, that would require six parking spaces as the ordinance is written, but she and her other 1.3 people are going to live there. What if you had a provision that said, that's fine, but when you bring your development plans, you got to show us six parking spaces, but you don't have to develop but perhaps half of them until we see if it's a problem? That at some point, you've got a plan for those six spaces, in case you sell the house and this guy needs them for rent, he may have to, as Commissioner said earlier, take a tree out or take some grass out or something, but somewhere there's a plan that says there are six parking spaces available if they're ever needed. So it's in the planning process, but it's just not developed in your initial development.
Right, in other words, you can't build up shed on that, you've got to leave it open space in case you do decide to rent or you sell it.
Yeah, and I mean, as, as Commissioner Meadows said, if there becomes a problem, folks next door are going to let you know, and there's an address associated with bed tax.
Well, and if you, listen, if you're going to build a 3,000-square-foot house, you're probably going to build a double garage in it as well, so that's two spaces. Behind that is another two. So you're at four spaces already, and, you know, you, you would just need two more, so two more could pull in, you know, either behind the others or something. So, you know, I don't think it's, we, we just need to look at...
We're not saying they have to be one, two, three, four, five, six. They could be two, two, and two, and you're right.
Take as many of those issues as you can and get it together in a...
Can I get one more point of clarification?
It's fun while you're doing it, yeah.
And we, we still want a limit to half-acre or less, is that, is that correct? Okay.
Now, now the request for today is if you want this to move to Planning Commission, would you like to see some more back here before we schedule it for Planning Commission here?
Absolutely.
So bring it back, okay?
Yeah, and I think bring it back in the, in, at a meeting in the South Walton.
Okay.
Is it, you know...
Okay. Okay. Clear on direction?
Yes, sir.
The best you can?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners. Good discussion.
Commissioner, the next item is the request to continue the, request to table the Stormwater Management Policies ordinance. So we're recommending it be tabled to a further date.
Motion to table?
Second.
Have a motion to table, any further discussion by the board? A public comment. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, and the opposed motion carries.
Chairman, that's all we have.
Okay.
Commissioners will need a motion to adjourn the regular session and then a motion to open a special session.
So moved to close the session.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, and the opposed motion carries.
Motion, go into executive session.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, and the opposed motion carries.
Before you leave, I have to read the notice.